The school board meeting will begin in one minute. Please take your seats. Again, the school board meeting will begin in one minute.
Good evening. The December 18th, 2018, meeting of the Marion County School Board is called to order. For the courtesy of those listening to the meeting, I am requesting everyone in the audience, please turn off your electronic devices or put them on vibrate. Later in the meeting, up to 30 minutes will be provided for individuals to address the board on matters concerning the operation of the Marion County school system or the school board only. Presentations to the board are limited to five minutes and are televised. If you wish to address the board regarding a regular agenda item or matters on which the board customarily takes action, you must first complete a peach form located on the table in the hallway. If you wish to address the board regarding a public hearing or a student discipline matter, please complete the lime green form. These forms must be fully completed and received by the board secretary no later than 5:40 PM. The procedures applicable for each are on a separate sheet. Madam Secretary, please call roll.
Mrs. Beth McCall, District 2.
Here.
Mrs. Nancy Stacy, District 1.
Here.
Mrs. Nancy Thrower, District 4.
Here.
Mr. Eric Cummings, District 3.
Here.
Mrs. Kelly King, District 5.
Here.
Dr. Heidi Mayer, Superintendent.
Here.
Mr. Paul Gibbs, School Board Attorney.
Here.
Thank you. Mr. Kevin Christian, Director of TV and Media Production, Public Relations, please introduce the individuals who will be providing the inspiration and leading us in the pledge this evening.
Thank you, Mrs. King. I've debated, I have two introductions, so I'm just gonna share them both with you. The first one starts off with a minister, a father, and a rabbi who walk into a school board meeting. But I'm... The second one is, we have three wise men with us tonight. Actually, there are only two, because one of them is not here, but we'll still stick with the two wise men who are here with us tonight. Minister Edwin Quintana, he is with South Point Church, and he's also chaplain of the Marion County Veterans Resource Center. And then Rabbi Baruch Greenstein, he is a local messianic rabbi. They're both going to come forward and share some brief inspiration with you and with all of us about this beautiful season that we are in.
Thank you. Seasons greetings and blessings to the board, the superintendent, attorney, all the teachers, everyone present. Before I pray, I just wanna, I got almost three minutes left, but I just wanted to tell you that we need God back in our schools. We are celebrating the birth of Christ. We're celebrating Christmas. The coming of Christ was prophesied 700 years before Christ. All you gotta do is read the book of Isaiah. We need God back in our schools. We gotta give love, prayers to our teachers. And I love teachers. I have three sisters, five cousins who are teachers. Teachers have a special calling. Unless you are called to be a teacher, stay away. Why? Because teachers sacrifice a lot, put up with a lot, work late, lay money out of their pockets. You know, there's a verse in the Bible that says, "To one much is given, much is required." But they do it with love. And they...I don't wanna start a big problem here at the school board meeting, member school board meeting, but I think they should be the highest-paid civil servants in the county. The word of God, I'll get into the word of God right now. It's out of Ephesians 4. It talks about spiritual gifts. "But to each one of us grace was given according to the measure of Christ's gift." Therefore, he says, "And he himself gave some to be apostles, prophets, evangelists, pastors, and teachers, for the equipment," which means building up, teaching, "of the saints." Who are the saints? We are the saints and the children. "For the work of the ministry, for the edifying of the body of Christ, did we all come to the unity of faith and of the knowledge of the Son of God, to a perfect man, to the measure of the stature of the fullness of Christ." That's what, you know, it's a gift. It's basically saying that teachers are appointed by God. You know, it's one of the five full ministries, you know. The book Ephesians hits on a wide range of morals and ethical behaviors. The biggest thing they hit on is living up to our heavenly calling, and these teachers do. Also, on Ephesians, chapter four, I'm going back to the verse, "I ask that we all walk in unity." The board, the teachers, the students, the parents, even the school resource offices. Good to see you, Officer Cabrera. "I therefore," the word of God says, "I therefore, the prisoner of the Lord beseech you to walk worthy of the calling with which you were called, with all holiness and gentleness and long suffering, bearing one another in love, endeavoring to keep the unity of the Spirit in the bond of peace. There is one body and one spirit, just as you were called in one hope of your calling, one Lord, one faith, one baptism, one God, and Father of all, who is above all and through all and in you all." So let us pray. If we could bow our heads, please. Father, we need you back in our schools. I ask that you bring wisdom to every board member that is here, the superintendent, everyone in senior management. I saw Dennis McFadden, bless him. Bless them all, Father God. Bless right now every single teacher, assistant teacher, teachers' aide, all employees of the Marion County, Lord God, and just bless them indeed. Give them such a blessing that they will just not only teach, but minister to every child in Marion County Public School System, Father God. Protect them, put a hedge of protection over all of them. Bless them, Father God, with your angels and, Lord God, I just thank you in advance, and we pray this all in the name of Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior. Amen.
Amen. Rabbi?
Shalom alaykum. Peace be unto you. Honor, privilege, to be able to be here and to share, and thank you for that opportunity to be able to do that. As I'm reminded briefly, on the Jewish calendar, Hanukkah. We've just celebrated Hanukkah, and briefly, what Hanukkah represents is a miracle. A miracle within a temple where there was enough oil for one day in a lamp to light, and it was, they had, there was enough oil, the miracle of oil, for the eight days. So that's the miracle of Hanukkah. But I'd like to share briefly about a greater miracle, and this miracle is the light of the world. This is a light that's not just eight days. This is a light that's eternal. Yeshua Messiah said something that was very, very important. He said, "I am the light of the world. He who follows me, who believes in me, will not walk in darkness, but shall have the light of life, eternal life, resurrection life." And so that is the call, the call of the shofar, which while I will share, is a call for the heart to be awakened. That's what the shofar represents, awaken to the grace and the mercy and the love that's found in God and Yeshua, our Messiah. And so with that, I would like to sound the shofar, and as I sound the shofar, it's that declaration that our hearts would be open to receive from Him that which He's ordained. And when it's amazing to think about that we were created in His image. Not only were we created in His image, but we were created with a purpose and a destiny established even before the foundation of the world. And in Him, Yeshua, our Messiah, that is revealed, and that is made alive within us by His Spirit. So I will sound the shofar, and then once I sound the shofar, I'd like to say a prayer and conclude with a prayer, but I'll sound the shofar first. Father, I come before you in the name of Yeshua Messiah. You are the God of Abraham, Isaac, and Jacob, the one true living God. I ask that your mercy and your grace would awaken us to the gift that's found in you, the gift of genuine repentance, that draws us into the fullness of who you are and who you've called us and created us to be, that draws us into the fullness of your forgiveness and your mercy and your grace, to be filled with your love and your forgiveness and the purposes for which you've created us, wherein and by you, and you alone, would be exalted and glorified. The Lord bless you, the Lord keep you, the Lord cause His face to shine upon you. The Lord bless you with His peace and His shalom. Amen.
Amen. Would you stand, please, for our pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With the exception of item C14.1, the job description for the state reporting specialist, which has been removed, which has been moved and placed under discussion, I recommend approval of the agenda for the December 11th, 2018, school board meeting with materials in the board packet. Those materials distributed to board members at the meeting and the audio recording included as part of the official record of the meeting.
May I have a motion on the superintendent's recommendation?
So.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Cummings, seconded by Ms. Thrower. All those in favor signify by voting aye, and those that oppose, like sign. And the motion passed 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the November 8th, 2018 Administrative Briefing and Work Session?
移到
Moved by Ms. McCall, seconded by Mr. Cummings. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? See none. All those in favor signify by voting aye, and those that oppose, like sign. The motion passed 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the November 13th, 2018, school board meeting?
移
Moved by Ms. Thrower.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. McCall. Are there any additions or corrections to these minutes? All those in favor vote aye, and those that do not like sign. And the motion passed 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the November 20th, 2018, school board organizational meeting?
移到
Second.
Moved by Ms. McCall, seconded by Mr. Cummings. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
It's not open.
You want us to do it verbal?
Okay. Mine just came up. It says error.
I hit you. We're good.
We're good?
Mm-hmm.
We didn't vote on that.
You didn't vote on that?
No.
But we can do it verbally.
We can do it verbal.
Okay, those are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. And the motion passed 5-0. Mrs. Judy Zanetti.
Wait, wait, wait. You have one more.
I do have one more. Sorry about that. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the November 20th, 2018, School Board Leasing Corporation meeting?
So move.
Moved by Mr. Cummings.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. McCall. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? See none. Those in favor signify by voting aye, and those that oppose, like sign. And the motion passed 5-0. Okay, now Ms. Zanetti. Public Education Foundation Officer would like to recognize a new business partner for Vanguard High School.
Thank you, Chairman King and Dr. Mayer. Thank you for allowing me to be here this evening, and good evening to all of the board members, and welcome, Ms. Thrower and Mr. Cummings. I look forward to working with both of you and all of school board members. After the holidays, I'll be inviting you to the Public Education Foundation to learn more about our programs and what we do. But for our new members, just so you know, when you see me here, I'm usually always bringing good news. So, so that's something to keep in mind, and tonight is no exception. I am presenting to you a new business partner for Vanguard High School. In this season of miracles, as Dr. Mayer likes to call it, and this season of Thanksgiving, I know that all of our school administrators give thanks for their school business partner. And if those schools that have no partner were making a Christmas list, getting a school business partner might be on the top of that list. So through a connection made by Dr. Mayer, we do have a new business partner with Vanguard High School. And something that's new about this partnership is that the partnership is actually the family. It's a family. So the Guy Quad family, the Guy Quad family will be the partner, the new partner at Vanguard High School, as opposed to a business. They are business owners here in Marion County and philanthropists here in Marion County. And something else that's very special about this partnership is that Karen Gackquad, Guy Quad, who you will be meeting in a moment, is actually a Vanguard High School graduate. So he is closing that loop and bringing it back and sharing with those that had given him so much. So before I present the certificates, I would like to invite Principal Chris Carlisle to the podium to say a few words.
Good evening. My name is Chris Carlisle, and I'm very proud to be the principal of Vanguard High School. It's great to be here tonight to introduce you and celebrate our newest partnership with the Guy Quad family. Karen and his brother Kunal are both Vanguard IB graduates here recently, and it's exciting to see our alumni come back to Marion County and be successful, and it's even more exciting to have them become a part of our community and support our students. So with that, I'd like to introduce you to Karen Gackquad.
Hello, everybody. So I wanted to thank two people for this process. First of all, Dr. Heidi Mayer. We had one discussion. We saw each other at a lot of mutual events, and it all it took was one discussion for me to sign on board and like, I can actually do this? We can actually like, you know, create an impact in the Marion County school board system and to students, and that's what it got me thinking. And I was thinking about it, there's plenty of people like us out here in Ocala, but the awareness isn't there, and all it took was one conversation for it to happen. And I realized, I feel like with this responsibility, after talking to Chris, we had a fantastic conversation. It's my responsibility and our responsibility to create that awareness and to facilitate it to as many people as we can. And being fortunate enough to have venues where I can host events and things like that, I want to help continue this awareness and bring more people on board to be also partnered with the Marion County School Board. Because as you guys all know, Ocala's expanding, and it's not just one family, it's many different families, and all the young people out there too that want to make a difference. And if we can create that awareness, starting now, by next year, I promise you, we'll have three or four more new business partners, easily. And that's what I pledge to do. I'm gonna bring some more people on here and create this awareness, and as a county and as a city, we will be successful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, it's obviously that Karen comes from a family that believes in giving back, and I think, I hope it's also obvious that Vanguard has some great graduates. So I've got some certificates for both of these gentlemen, and then we'll let Mr. Christian take a picture. He needs to move out, or are you okay, Kevin? Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
I'd just like to say thank you. Vanguard's in my district and kids' family community all the way, and two of our boys are IB graduates, so you're giving me a lot of hope for them too. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. James Jackson, social worker, would like to recognize the winners of the Red Ribbon School Spirit Award.
Good evening, Dr. Mayer and school board members. It's an honor and a privilege to be here this evening. We want to say thank you so much for allowing us to be here. Tonight, we'd like to recognize the winners of the school spirit contest for 2018 Red Ribbon. Both these schools showed great school spirit during the Red Ribbon Week. They had their campuses adorned with red ribbons, door decorations, their marquees were also included with different writings and literature that was passed out throughout the schools. They had fun learning activities that involved direct student participation. Without a doubt, they were pretty, they were the best schools in Marion County. The two schools that did win were College Park Elementary School and Howard Middle School. And I would love to have Angie Frespatino come up along with a student who would like to read just a short paragraph of her thoughts of Red Ribbon.
And we actually just had a little change. She actually wrote her own paper about how she'd like College Park to purchase reading materials for the school with the money. If a school in need is given some cash, what might they use it for? They could get each student a lovely book, enough to fill their hands with that story book. A question forms in that child's mind, then it comes out as an elaborate line. To answer that perfectly puzzling question, it takes the teacher a long time. This is what school is about. For the teacher, it's not all about spitting out lines. School is about answering a student almost all of the time, and I feel that these very meaningful rhymes with a lot of hope and help can change things in less than a lifetime.
All right.
Thank you very much. This is the all trophy for Red Ribbon Week, and we'll be getting you the check.
Taking off my school board hat. On behalf of Marion County Children's Alliance, we want to congratulate you and present you with $500.
Thank you.
Don't get away with that picture.
Our second winner again was Howard Middle School, and I'd like to call Howard Greenbaum, and he brought some students with him as well.
Thank you. It's an honor to be here tonight and be recognized in front of you, the board.
I'd like to bring up Alex.
Rudiani and Kelsey Walther. Students who not only participated in our activities for the week, but they also produced our student red ribbon video that we displayed for the week. So again, thank you, and it's an honor to be recognized tonight.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Hey, Mr. Greenbaum. On behalf of Marion County Children's Alliance, congratulations, and I present you with $500.
Thank you very much.
Thank you again so much for allowing us to come in and present these awards. It was a great night and a great week for Red Ribbon. We also want to take a real quick, say, second, just to say thank you very much to the Marion County Children's Alliance and the Community Council Against Substance Abuse for sponsoring these things, the $500 checks and the trophies that come along with that too. They do this every year. Woods Printing also helps out with the trophies, getting them ready, making sure they're cleaned up, and making sure that the names of the schools are on them. So thank you very much again, and y'all have a wonderful evening and happy holidays.
Thank you. Thank you for your dedication. All right, we're gonna move forward. I will now ask the school board's attorney to explain the rules governing persons who wish to address the school board tonight.
Good evening. In compliance with Section 286.0114 of Florida statutes, the school board has adopted uniform procedures for public speakers who wish to speak at tonight's meeting, either regarding one of tonight's agenda items or a matter relating to the operations of the school district. These procedures will ensure the public has a reasonable opportunity to be heard on school board and school district matters. A written summary of these procedures is available from the table in the hallway. Public speaker forms are also located on the same table. The completed forms were due to the school board secretary no later than 5:40 PM. Tonight's speakers will be called prior to the business portion of the school board's meeting in the order of receipt by the school board secretary. Before you begin speaking, please state your full name and address for the record and spell your last name. Each speaker will have five minutes of time. However, if there are more than five persons who wish to speak tonight, the board may seek consensus to limit each speaker's time to three minutes. When the speaker has one minute remaining, the speaker will receive a visual notice to complete his or her comments. Speakers may not yield their time to other people. Speakers and meeting attendees are expected to conduct themselves in a respectful manner. Therefore, verbal attacks and profanity are strictly prohibited. If there are matters dealing with student discipline, including expulsions, they will be scheduled at the conclusion of the televised portion of this meeting. Parents may address the board regarding a discipline matter at that time. To ensure student privacy, only a parent or guardian may use a student's first or last name, identifying references to or identification of other students and/or their families are also strictly prohibited. Thank you for your attention to the board's requirements.
Thank you. Ms. Martina Lopez.
Yes, we have Deborah Reed.
Hello, it's a pleasure to be here. My name is Deborah Gale Reed. I have been a citizen of Marion County since 1969, and I graduated from Forest High School in 1974. My father was teaching there the same time that I was there. He, Donald Gale, G-A-L-E, and he taught commercial art and drafting. He started in the school year of '69 and finished the end of the school year '81. I was blessed to own a Christian bookstore, Rainbow Bible and Bookstore in Bellevue for 37 years, nine months, by God's grace and to His glory, and recently closed it. I'm here to stand up for the right of the citizens of Marion County to vote for the superintendent of the Marion County School Board. We are blessed to be Americans in a free country, a democracy, and it should rightfully be and is rightfully the decision of the citizens of Marion County, the parents, grandparents, cousins, aunts, uncles, all the relatives, friends, caregivers, and even the people that don't know the students of Marion County, to vote for the individual that they feel that God is leading them to vote for as superintendent of the Marion County Schools. the individual that they feel that God is leading them to vote for as superintendent of the Marion County Schools. For the citizens of Marion County, to continue to have that right to vote for superintendent of Marion County Schools is helping to uphold our freedom in America, this democratic nation, this democracy. And so, that is why I'm up here speaking this evening, to stand up for the right for Marion County citizens to vote for superintendent of Marion County Schools. I think I left out my address. 2931 Southeast 110th Street, Ocala, Florida, 34480. Did I leave anything else out? Okay, thank you.
James McKinnon.
Good evening. I'm James McKinnon, M-C-K-I-N-O-N. My address is P.O. Box 87, Reddick, Florida, 32686. I would like to at least say first, I am so happy to have an opportunity to be here and to see Ms. Nancy Thrower and Mr. Eric, Pastor Eric Cummings, working and actually in, on the job and doing what need to be done. I know for a fact, what you have to do is not easy. So, it's going to take all you got to do it. So, I know you've got two good people to help you do it. At this particular time, if I may, I'm going to ask my church, like, some of them came anyway, like, man, with y'all standing. And let's give them just a hand for coming and being here. I think Sister Reed, also a member of our church, and I think she came to say what I'm about to say. I knew she was going to do that, I let her do the talking, and I was sat down because I see that very good job. I came from, in the interest of just doing what's right. In the interest of us doing what's right. I have two concerns, and I think I put them on the paper. And one of those concerns has to do with the superintendent need very much, need to be able to finish her contract time. And if I'm not mistaken, I think it's 15 to 20, 2015 to 2020. We are, everyone here, we are here sort of as your boss. You know, we're here, and that's the only reason I can stand and say this, because I don't see y'all over me, I'm over y'all. You know, because my vote makes a difference. But I'm coming to say that she should have an opportunity to finish her contract time. And I cannot see any evidence where Dr. Meyer is responsible for making any changes on her contract. In other words, and let me just state this, was it not the board who pushed for the appointment or the referendum to be placed on the ballot to appoint a superintendent? That's number one. Is it not my understanding that the board is proposing a different kind of contract? If I'm wrong, y'all help me out. Is it my understanding that you are asking, are going to ask, the superintendent to do something that would alter her contract? And the final thing is this, the financial burden on the board legally could be substantial should the board find itself in a legal battle. We are concerned because we do not want you to spend money that's not necessary. When Ms. Nancy Thrower first came on in her first day, she saved the school board, if I remember right, $110,000 or at least put something on hold so that money can be looked at again. Our concern that we have is that each of you need to make sure that you're doing what's right, not out of vengeance or anything. We going to always be watching. Not just my people, each and every board will be watching. The other thing is this. If success, if success continues in the district in the spring of the year, and should the district grade rise, I think our superintendent should have first opportunity to be appointed. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Do we have any other speakers?
Sarah Clifton.
Sarah Clifton, 1271 Northeast 11th Circle, Ocala. This time, I wrote down my address so that I wouldn't forget it. A few weeks ago, the people of Marion County voted by a large margin to hire rather than continue to elect our superintendent of schools. I don't believe this is a reflection on Dr. Meyer or an endorsement of the board. I just think there were a lot of people who decided and agreed with me that local educational position should not be partisan. Our superintendent race was, unlike the board. And our county has grown so that it's time perhaps to look outside our county for a CEO for our schools. That's the reason I voted for hiring, and that was only because the superintendent is at this time still a partisan race. But Dr. Meyer was elected to a four-year term. And it's only right that she be allowed to complete the full term to which she was elected. It's going to take time to find the right candidate to hire as a next superintendent. I agree with Brother McKinnon that Dr. Meyer should be considered if she wishes to be for that position. But it only makes sense to use the next two years, or however much time it takes, to find the right candidate and then see about hiring them or continuing their service, rather than just in a knee-jerk or immediate sense, starting now. We need to take the time to do it right. I would ask that Dr. Meyer be continued in her position to which she was elected by the people of this county for the full four-year term, and that we use that time we have left to find the right candidate or continue with the right candidate as ever that comes out. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other speakers? All right. Okay. May I have a motion to approve consent agenda item C-8.1-C20.1, with the exception of item C-14.1, the job description for the state reporting specialist, which has been moved and placed under discussion?
Summon.
Moved by Ms. McCall.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cummings. All those in favor signify by voting aye, and those that oppose, like sign. And the motion passed 5-0. Okay. So, now we're moving forward with the approval for the two ground leases for cell phone tower communication, facilities for Anthony Elementary and Greenway Elementary. Do we have a motion?
Summon.
Moved by Ms. McCall. Second by Ms. Thrower. Do we have any discussion? No? Okay. Those in favor signify by voting aye, and there's a opposed like sign. So, we don't have to. And the motion passed 5-0. May I have approval for the new job classification description for the state reporting specialist?
Summon.
I think we need to get it moved, and then I'll ask. Okay. I'm a little backed up. Okay. May I have a motion to approve the new job description, for the state reporting specialist?
Summon.
Okay. Moved by Ms. McCall. Second by Ms. Thrower. Okay. Ms. Stacy, you pulled item C-14.1.
Yes, I did. I received some calls on this, and I have spoken to the district about it. And my position is that we continue having, you know, we keep moving people into specialist positions and into different, you know, things and giving them raises and stuff that are not directly connected to the classroom. I understand that the reporting specialist is an important person, and they've been doing this job. And since Mr. Yancey was here, this is the way it has been set up. And suddenly, this position's going to a 21% increase in salary. I ask why the large jump from the category, the pay scale of C-4 to C-9? I ask why the big jump? And I was told that, well, they are given instruction to, like, the IPC clerks and things, but yet they're making the same amount of money. Well, they're really not. I know MESP now has a, they're moving towards a change in their contract that's coming up on the IPC clerks. And I know y'all have come to an agreement about that, which I also disagree with. But essentially, the only difference between the IPC clerk, the IPC clerk was at 240 days instead of 260. And they were moved to the 260-day contract in the new upcoming thing. But all that means basically is, we're going to be paying for their spring break, Christmas. They're really not going to be working any more days. Because once they go on as a full-time employee, they get for every, up until, under 10 years, they get six hours every paycheck for vacation. And then after 10 years, they get eight hours for every paycheck for vacation time. So, basically, they may even be working less days because they could accrue like 26 days vacation, which would make them actually working less than they're working now under the contract that they are now. So, the IPC clerk is not making as much because their hourly rate is the same. But the specialist is a full-time position. They don't work any different days, they just get paid for their vacations. So, they really aren't making more. They are making, you know, the specialist is still making more because their vacation time is paid for. So, because the 240 days they get, but then they take it back in, the 260, but they take it back in 20 days vacation. So, it takes them back to the 240 days. So, we're back. What I'm concerned about is jumping, and then I was also told that someone in the district took a secretarial position that was a data entry clerk, took a secretarial position, and that that position is very valuable, the data clerk person, because they are reporting to the state because the secretarial position paid more. And so, I asked, okay. I asked when I was speaking with the district, okay, how much does a confidential secretary make? So, the confidential secretary still doesn't make up to this new plateau that we've put these people at. I said, okay, then why didn't we come somewhere in between? If we're going to raise the data entry clerks, the data clerks up, why did we jump from here to 21%? Why didn't we come somewhere? If we're losing, if we lost one because they took a confidential secretary position at school, why don't we just make it the same salary as confidential secretary? I was also concerned because I asked demographics of this position. And this is a, there was not really, there was a, one minority person that was in a position, but she left. And I'm concerned that we have our demographics such that where we have not the minority representation in some of these high-paying jobs that we have. If we can go and we can pay this amount, this gigantic 21% pay increase basically to these clerks, but yet we can't give the bus drivers a raise, we can't give the janitors a raise because they're making $9 an hour and they can't even hardly get through their day. So, I, just out of curiosity, I looked to see how much it would make a difference if they did get this $3, this, you know, they went up in this raise. It could make a $6,200 difference, almost $6,300, that's without fringe. And it's for four employees. So, the district said, well, but Nancy, we gave them a clerk. We took a clerk out that was in our arsenal. We had a clerk's position we removed so that it would not cost the district anything. It's kind of a wash. So, my next question was, why do we have a clerk position in the staffing plan that was unfilled and hasn't been filled since anyone can remember? So, that's one of those positions that I see we float along. I call it kind of our slush fund where we have positions that are sitting there that we know we're not going to fill, probably aren't going to fill, but we kind of keep them there, and then we use them to wheel and deal with. And so, I don't look at it as, oh, we're saving money because we took our clerk away. We took this clerk position, and I asked, okay, is it filled? No, it's not filled. So, we had this unicorn position sitting here that we weren't using anyway. So, we're going to trade it to make this money up. And so, when the public sees government doing things like this, and then we have our janitors and the people that are struggling at $9 an hour, and we want to raise this position from $14.55 an hour to starting $17.55 an hour, and we can't, you know, we can't raise our other areas up. And I just feel like it's unfair. If we want to give the data entry clerks a raise, I can see, okay. If we're losing them to secretarial, then raise them to the secretarial pay, which is somewhere in between this $14 to $17. I think it goes to 16 something. So, it's, you know, so we wouldn't be losing someone who's well-trained for state reporting to a secretarial job at a school. Then be competitive there. But why go to that point and then another leap over it? So, my concern is that we have people that have been doing this job under this same condition for all these years, and basically, they're not making more money than the IPC, they're not making less money than the IPC clerks because the IPC clerks haven't been paid vacation, but they're fixing to be because that's a whole nother story. But all the reasons, I tried to work with the district and see where they were coming from, but every excuse they gave me for why they were paying, it didn't, it just didn't jive with me. So, that's my concern, and I just wanted to bring it up for discussion, and I don't know how the board feels. But I feel we've gone, kind of like I call it sometimes Santa Claus. We've gone from this point all the way to this, a 21% increase, where we can't even give our janitors a 75 cent raise, you know. I just have a problem.
Ms. McCall.
Mr. Clark, could you come up, please? This, can you just describe to me and the board the qualifications now versus five years ago for this position?
Can you hand out some job responsibilities that are tied to this new job description?
And these duties and responsibilities come from statute or come from just what they're doing now versus what they did?
Right. So, Ms. Stacy's right. The job description that these, this particular job role is under is under the data entry clerk, which means that at the district level, they are responsible for all those duties that you see on that list. And they're at the same pay level right now as the IPCs at the schools that they govern, that they make sure that their data is accurate. They're actually, in some ways, supervising the data that is actually coming from the school. So, this job role is responsible for every student data element that our school district deals with. They give guidance to administrators, not only at the school level, but at the district level. And this particular role is critical, and we recognized how critical this role was. So, we were willing to surrender a position in order to get this job description in line with the duties that they currently are doing, at a cost savings of $7,000 to the district. We got that number. We looked at other school districts, and we looked at similar job role. We found at St. Lucy, there's actually four job roles that this particular one job role overlaps. And that range is from $30,000 to about $56,000 from what I can remember us doing some research on. And that range is from $30,000 to about $56,000 from what I can remember us doing some research on. Now, these, this particular job role is very critical because they're responsible every day, every month and every survey period, making sure that the district gets the funding that it needs. If they are not accurate in doing their jobs, the district could either lose funding or funding can be held up. And we just felt it was critical enough for us to surrender a position in order to get this job description in line with the duties that they're currently doing. They supervise IPCs, they train them, they're validating their work. So anything that deals with student data and funding, class size, FTE, they are responsible for making sure that our district gets the funding needed.
Now, you said you surrendered a position, but it was an unfilled position. It was a position we probably shouldn't have even had there in the first place.
It was unfilled because we were ready for the next staffing plan to be able to save the district that $7,000.
But you told me it was unfilled before you even came here.
It was, someone had resigned from that position and it was available and we chose not to fill it in preparation for upgrading this job description.
Well, um, you know, that's fine. I'll, I won't be voting for it and that's okay if everybody else does. I just feel I have a moral obligation to talk about the little people who work for us that um, that we can't give them hardly any money at all and we give this one position a 21% increase. And um, the IPC clerks, yes, they make the same amount per hour, but they don't get any of their vacation paid, they don't get their spring break paid, they don't get their Christmas break paid, they don't get, because they don't have vacation.
And I'll just.
So that's really like a $3,200 over and beyond what the IPC clerks are making.
The one thing I left out is the turnover. This is also going to help us gain stability at the district level to make sure that these jobs get done accurately. There's turnover at the school level and that we've actually lost individuals at the district level to other jobs, as Ms. Stacy noted, because of the, the salary wasn't aligned with the job responsibilities.
Right, you lost it to a secretarial job, which is somewhere in between the current and the expanded, like 10%.
I can't speak for every position that we've lost someone to.
That's your highest, I think that's one of your highest non-instructional positions in a school is your confidential secretary.
Those critical roles that our school district needs stability.
Okay, well, we've had a lot of information and I know we have some new board members. Um, and I'll, this is just being thrown at you. What, as a board, would we be more comfortable if we tabled this so we could have a workshop where we can go in more depth and maybe we can search for answers before we do this? Or are you guys comfortable on voting on this now? You prefer to table it for a little bit? Yeah, because this is a lot. So we got the three votes. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to motion that we table um, the new job classification description for the state reporting specialist till um.
Somebody would need to make a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Oh, I can't make the motion. Nancy, make that motion.
I'd like to make the motion that we table this and have some discussion about exactly what is involved. Compare it to um, your confidential secretary IPC clerk and, and compare it and do a really good study. Um, I don't disagree that maybe there should be a little raise to keep them, to keep from losing them to the confidential secretaries in our schools, which is our high, one of our, probably our highest-paid non-instructional position in the schools. But um, but that's somewhere in between this. And I would like to make a motion that we table this for now and we discuss exactly what this pay scale will be.
Okay, um, February 4th, it looks.
That, that would.
Well, that's a decent.
Are you making a motion to table it until February 4th?
I'll make a motion to table it until February 4th.
Okay.
Is that a, is that an actual board meeting date or is that, that seems too early for a board?
It's the 3rd.
That's the workshop, you need to table it to a board meeting night so that it can be taken off the table. You can put it on a workshop.
Okay, so that's our workshop and then the board meeting, and I don't have a calendar.
It'll be the um, 12th.
12th, okay. So then we'll put it back on February 12th.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Can we take a vote on the table?
Okay, alright, so there, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And does a opposed like sign?
Aye.
Okay.
Mine didn't come up. Oh, wait.
So did I vote, so we're voting to table?
Table it.
Okay, and the motion passed 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the following cash or tangible donations that have a total value of $70,136.18. $8,000 to Bellevue Middle School from Monroe Regional Health System. $1,000 to Emerald Shores Elementary from IDX Foundation. $2,850 to Forest High School from Harvey L. Young Family Foundation, Inc. $1,000 to Fort King Middle School from Altrusa International of Ocala, Inc. $1,612.85 to Horizon Academy at Marion Oaks from Marion, excuse me, Horizon Academy FFA Alumni, Inc. $2,500 to Howard Middle School from their business partner Cox Communication via Public Education Foundation of Marion County. $1,700 to Lake Weir Middle School from Public Education Foundation of Marion County Grants for Grant Great Ideas. Baseball School Board valued at $41,403.33 to North Marion High School from their business partner Collision Wright Construction Court. $2,571 to Oak Crest Elementary from Public Education Foundation of Marion County Grants for Great Ideas. $2,500 to Oak Crest from their business partner Cox Communication via Public Education Foundation of Marion County. $1,000 to Osceola Middle School from Altrusa International of Ocala, Inc. $1,000 to Sunrise Elementary from IDX Foundation. $1,999 to Vanguard High School from St. John River Water Management District. $1,000 to Vanguard High School from their business partner Rainys, Inc. via Public Education Foundation of Marion County. May I have a motion to this? Okay, move by Mr. Cummings, seconded by Ms. Threwer.
Is it up for everyone?
It's not up yet.
Mine, mine was.
Oh, it was?
Mine didn't come up.
Uh-uh.
Mine come up. Aren't you special?
Do you just want us to do it verbally? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the motion passed 5-0. Ms. Stacy, would you like to thank?
I sure would. I would like to thank the great people of Marion County for all the things that they do for our school system. We saw a young man today representing his, representing his family's business, becoming a business partner for Vanguard High School. We see a lot of young people starting to do things, which is really exciting. Um, you know, even in the Christmas parade, you know, we had the um, the gentleman that took care of all of that for us, a young, a young businessman here in Marion County that took care of the Christmas parade festivities for us. And so I thank everyone in this community for their generosity and for jumping on board and knowing that what we produce here in Marion County will make the difference in this county because those are the people that will be working in the businesses at the banks that we go to, the doctors that we visit. Hopefully, they'll stay in Marion County and we'll see the fruits of our labor for all the extra things we do for our school system. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, a special administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for Tuesday, December 18th, 2018 at 9:00 a.m. The purpose of this work session is to discuss the process of an appointed superintendent. Um, also, I want to give us a friendly reminder that Mr. Gibbs gave us this binder a couple of weeks ago. So I just ask that you just really read it, take your time and just see what's in there. Also, the next administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for Thursday, January 3rd, 2018 at 9:00 a.m. The purpose of this.
2019.
Oh, 2019. We all do that once where we call 2019, 19. The purpose of the work session is to discuss redistricting of school, 2019, 2020 instructional calendar and Reddit Call Your Water update. Okay, and we're going to move along to board concerns. Superintendent, we're going to begin with you tonight.
Fabulous. Officer Cabrera, thanks for being here tonight. Uh, it's always good to see you. And in chatting before the meeting, I understand that over the holiday, you'll, you'll be working New Year's time. Um, so, well, we're glad to have Christmas off, but we send our good wishes to, to everyone, all of our first responders who have to work the holidays. And we just wish a peaceful holiday season for all of you and safety for all of you, so. And we'll see you in the new year. Okay, great, great. Um, the, our literacy festival that will be April 13th, we had a theme contest for this. And this year, I, I wanted a student to choose the theme for the literacy festival. And we have a winner and we will have a big reveal soon. I can't say when, it's going to be a surprise. And that student will be receiving a gift card for books, to use for books. So we're very excited about that, but stay tuned because that will be happening very soon before the break. We're very excited about that. And we'll have more information, I know Kevin will share that out soon. Um, a little sooner, this winter break, we will be having our winter reading challenge. And this is for our students in kindergarten through fifth grade to keep them interested, to keep them motivated through the holidays with reading. And so this contest will be going um, from December 20th to January 2nd. And we will be tracking the number of minutes our students are reading using Myon. Uh, every student in the district, one for you and Mr. Gibbs, received a bookmark, there's one for each of you with the details on the back. And um, our principals have done a fabulous job with sharing that information with our students and with our families. And, and thank you as well, Kevin and Jenna Dawson for sharing that information. It's also with the holiday time, we had our parade last week. And I know, um, thank you to those of you who could join us in different capacities. And I know that you'll be sharing more about that when it's your time. But I wanted to call attention to some of the things that happened behind the scenes that, that folks didn't see. First off, a huge, huge thank you to the parade planning committee. And they're all volunteers from the committee headed by Sue Mosley, William Taylor, Todd Fram, Frambro, um, and, and a bunch of folks behind the scenes doing great things for our kids. We had all of our high school and middle school band participating. And uh, OPD came to the rescue for us. And I have to give a shout out to Officer Grace. When we had a little mix-up with our sunrise snowmen, our sunrise dance team, and um, their bus did not show up on time. We had a bus driver who was spending the evening with her grandchild. And she jumped up, Brenda, Brenda Matchick got her on the phone, she jumped up, she got a bus, she got to sunrise, she got the kids to um, the back entrance of Fort King. And uh, Officer Grace met her, because everything was blocked off, you know, with the parade. Officer Grace met her in her, in her little cart, gave an escort for the bus to get to the unloading, then got the bus to where it could safely wait for the kids. Uh, the, the snowmen made it to the parade. And it was, it was thanks to, to Officer Grace and that entire parade planning committee who bent a lot of rules to get those kids in and, and we thank them. So it was a, it was a Christmas miracle, I'll say. And behind the scenes too, we want to thank um, many, many people. Uh, I know Ms. Crowder, Joe Crowder, our program specialist for the arts. She was there making sure the bands were all organized. And we cannot forget um, not only you Kevin, who emcee every year, but um, all your folks behind the camera who, who were there and, and work, gosh, 24/7 for, for many days to make sure that so many people get to enjoy this parade. So kudos to all of you behind the camera as well for making magic happen. A couple of weeks ago, well, it feels like a couple of weeks, but I guess it was a week ago, we had the, the football semifinals. So let me take us back a couple of weeks to the semifinals and where um, North Marion High School made it through to the finals. So we applaud them. And what's unique about North Marion making it to the, the state finals, and Rev, you were a dean there, yes, okay. Okay, so um, with that, uh, it's the first time since 94 that a Marion County team has made it to the state finals under the leadership of, of Coach Offord, and he's only been there three years. We look at Principal Livinggood, who's, this is her first year there as principal. And she though walked into, in an environment and continued that positive momentum that was set in place by Principal Whitehouse and, and um, thank you so much, yes, when I'm on the camera, it, sometimes it slips, but um, Elizabeth Brown, thank you too. And um, their AD as well, just fabulous. And, and we congratulate them. But going back to the semifinals, when Denellon High School played Rains in Duval. And um, I went up there for that game, a little sensitive to the safety of the area with the previous incident that had happened at Rains, but, but kudos to Rains and, and their team. It was very safe and, and a great event and we were well taken care of. But when the game turned and things were not going our way, I was so proud of those kids. And I get a little emotional, but I was so proud. Every, every player kept their head in the game. Every coach, and we were right there on the sideline, Jennifer Leeds and I and Jody Phillips. Every coach stayed positive. Every kid had their head in the game. Tony Maldonado, their um, AD was right there with us too. The band, and you know, they have a, a small band, but that band played like they were at the Rose Bowl. The cheerleaders kept it up and the fans, there were quite a few fans. And, and you know, Denellon's not typically a traveling group. The stands were packed and those fans were loud and they were positive. Everything out of them was positive, encouraging. And, and it was, I was so proud, just so proud of them. So they, they, they represented themselves and us very well, very well. So kudos to them as well, we're proud of them. And as Judy said earlier, um, you know, it is this, I like to call it the season of miracles. And um, here, Ms. Lopez, you're, hold that. So as, as we think about the holidays and, and Christmas especially, um, it's always nice to, the camera, there you go. Okay, just to remember what exactly Christmas is about. And uh, when we think of a secular way of sharing that, nobody really does it better than Dr. Seuss. And as you remember, the Grinch, the Grinch tried to steal all the joy, just all the joy, um, from the Who's. And in the Grinch's mind, joy was brought through material tangible things. And so he went and stole all the presents. And he thought that he would make it the most miserable Christmas for the Who's. But something, something happened, a Christmas miracle. So it's Christmas morning and the Grinch hears noise. And he says, "Every Who down in Whoville, the tall and the small, was singing without any presents at all." He hadn't. He hadn't stopped Christmas from coming. It came, somehow or other, it came just the same." Hold them up. "And the Grinch, with his Grinch feet, ice cold in the snow, stood puzzling and puzzling. How could it be so? It came without ribbons, it came without tags, it came without packages, boxes, or bags, and he puzzled three hours till his puzzler was sore. Then the Grinch thought of something he hadn't before. Maybe Christmas, he thought, doesn't come from a store. Maybe Christmas perhaps means a little bit more." And truly, it does, because it's right here. So, with that, thank you very much, I just wish all of you a very Merry Christmas and be safe.
Thank you. Ms. Lopez, do you have anything?
I do not. I wish everyone safe holidays, hope to see you all back 2019, enjoy, get some rest, we have a lot of work to do. Thank you.
Mr. Gibbs?
I have nothing tonight.
Ms. McCall?
Yes, first of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Vianello and Mrs. Guest at Bellevue High School today. We went to the CTE showcase, and it was absolutely wonderful, so thank you. And I sat with a gentleman who lives in Bellevue, and he has no children, and he's not around children much, and he said it was so enlightening because he gets jaded from what he reads about kids in the newspapers and things. So, he was very pleased, so thank you. And those kids were amazing. Ms. King was there, they were absolutely amazing. From there, I went to Lake Forest Middle School where I actually judged the science fair. I'm not a science person, so I was a little nervous, but had fun judging the 7th grade projects, and we'll be back in the morning for the learning walks. I encourage you all again to please participate in your schools' learning walks because you will learn a tremendous amount about what's going on inside of your schools. I also wanna thank the video and TV production team for the Christmas Parade, being there, being able to commentate, it was so much fun. Thank you, Kevin. But seeing the work that they do and what goes into making that happen is just tremendous, and so, I greatly, greatly appreciate all of them. One concern that I have, and I thought about this last week, we had a group that last year volunteered to tutor our Evergreen students and said they would continue with our students, and so, I would just like a report from somebody from Evergreen or somewhere that knows, is that tutoring continuing? Because they said they were gonna continue with our kids, and I have not heard anything. So, at some point, if somebody can give me that information, I would greatly appreciate it. Thank you. That's all, Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays.
Thank you. Ms. Stacy?
Yes, you know, I did, Norvella did mention something about trying to get the group together here in January or February to try to do some tutoring again. I just happened to hear Norvella speak about it casually in a conversation, but, because they took it on and they did great things, and it was great for the kids to see the community reaching out to them like they did. And I'd like to thank Dr. Meir for starting our meeting out like she did. It was very, very festive to have a minister here and talking about our Christmas season, and then a Masonic Rabbi who also understands our religion, but also could share with us his discussion about Hanukkah and how Hanukkah started, because there's people, I'm sure, that watch our television, our board meetings on TV, and they don't really know this, and it was interesting for him and, you know, to take us through his festive way that he's in. So, thank you, Dr. Meir, for putting that together for us, it was enjoyable. Some of us this past weekend were fortunate, either they went or family members went to hear Governor DeSantis-elect speak in the villages. We have spoken for years about our problems with Common Core. Parents can't teach their children to do the math, they can't do the homework, it's just on and on and on, and they, you know, they call the teachers because they can't do this math, and Governor-elect DeSantis announced he will be dismantling Common Core. That is hot on his number-one agenda to do, so I was quite thankful to hear that. I'm excited about our new Commissioner of Education. I'm friends with Speaker Corcoran, and have spent some time with him in the past couple of years, and I'm very excited about where we're going with education in Florida. Thank you.
Ms. Thor.
Faith and hope are wonderful things, and this season just reminds us of that. It's always there, and it seems like it's been a very long time since I was sworn in, and I believe that was November 20th. So, time flies. I hope everyone had a wonderful Thanksgiving, and since that time, my gosh, it has been a whirlwind, and it's been great. Mr. Cummings and I were down at the Florida School Boards Association meeting and new school board member training, which also included four hours of ethics training, and we have school finance training to look forward to in February, so all kinds of deep learning to hopefully become certified school board members as quickly as possible, because it definitely is a huge responsibility to be part of Marion County School Board and representing all of you. Also, we lost a fantastic community activist, longtime champion of kids, and that was Mr. Eugene Poole. He passed away, and his home-going celebration, a tribute to the man, it lasted three hours, and it was really great. And again, Mr. Cummings represented the Marion County School Board in saying some words about him, so I thought that was just wonderful and a great tribute. Also, too, speaking of Hanukkah, we had the giant menorah lighting down at the square in Ocala, and right on cue, we got all of the rituals in, and then it started pouring down rain. So, we got out of there just in time, but that was a beautiful ceremony, and it's wonderful to see the community coming together and honoring each other's faiths and rituals, so that was really cool, I enjoyed that. And, gosh, getting on to the schools, Alachua County Schools came down for a tour of our Hillcrest School to see our best practices and how we do things, and how they might be able to share and duplicate some of what we do up there. So, that was wonderful to be involved with that as their school board member this time around. Hillcrest is in my district, so that was great. We also had our independent citizens funding referendum, it's a mouthful oversight committee, which is, it is the citizens that oversee the one mil funding that was renewed just overwhelmingly, and thank you to the community so much for that. It's gonna bring upwards of $16 million into our, and I think that's every year. So, it's just, yes, so we, it's just another sign of how supportive the community is for us. Therapeutic horseback riding for our special needs students, we're working on that. We had the sinkholes after Irma that put things on hold on that property, but we're continuing to work through that, and hopefully, we'll get the kids back riding as soon as possible. Fort King is also in my district, and I was there for their faculty meeting, which was also a holiday celebration, so it was fun to break bread with that staff and introduce myself to them in a whole new way. We had a school board work session, which was very productive and collaborative, I felt. We had the legislative delegation meeting where Ms. King spoke on behalf of the school board for our two main priorities coming forward for Tallahassee. So, that was, again, a new experience for me. We had the school-related employee of the year breakfast at the Klein Center, and our school-related employees just do so much behind the scenes to support our teachers and our students, wonderful people, great to see them recognized. Carolyn Farmer, the secretary of Forest High School, ended up being the overall winner, and she was obviously very honored and well-deserved. Veterans Helping Veterans had a benefit in a sock hop, so I got to dress in a 50's style, which was new to me and helped support a great cause. We had the Ocala Christmas Parade, and there was really nothing like being on that float and having all these little kids saying Merry Christmas, Merry Christmas, cutest thing ever, and brought home to me that what we do for kids every day is just the most important thing ever, to have the honor of being able to do. So, I love that. We had a Kiwanis Club meeting last night at Red Lobster, Comprehensive Mental Health Plan update, that was a long meeting today, but very collaborative. A meeting tomorrow with the CEP, which is the Chamber and Economic Partnership, so I'm looking forward to that, it's all connected. MTC Winter Graduation is coming up, Marion Technical College, I think a lot of us are planning to go to that. Great stuff on the vocational side. Vanguard High School Faculty Meeting coming up on Friday, and then, last but not least, the volunteers for our textbook review committee, we're getting those appointments in, and everyone has the opportunity to select folks from the community, and we've been getting emails from folks from the community asking to be on the committee, so that's pretty great. It just shows that, I think the word's getting out there, that kids, family, community, it's we're all in it together. So, gosh, it's been a whirlwind, it's been great. Thank you again for the opportunity. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, Happy Holidays, happy everything. Thank you.
Mr. Cummings?
Good evening, everybody. It's good to be here once again. We have been extremely, extremely busy, as Ms. Thor said, since the FSBA meeting down in Tampa. It was a very fruitful week, and left there with a headache because we learned so much, but it was a good week. I do want to also commend the Denelon High School football team and the North Marion High School football team. Neither one of them are my alma mater, however, I love football, and I love to see kids doing great in what they choose to do, and they represent Marion County on a different level. Shout out to both of those schools, Denelon is one of my schools, and North Marion's on the north end, they've always been rivals, but when it comes to Marion County, we're all on the same team. So, I'm grateful for what they did and how they exemplar, how they represented this county in such a way that it made everybody proud, it made no difference what school you were a graduate of. And then, I too also want to give a shout out to Dr. NH Jones Elementary School, Principal Poole, and Ms. Coleman. I was there on last Thursday for their Santa Under the Stars, which was a Christmas concert. Shout out to Ms. Wickline, their music instructor, music is vitally important in the lives of our kids and the development of our kids, and they did a wonderful, wonderful event on last Thursday at Dr. NH Jones. Just to see the principal dressed up as an elf meant a lot. One special note, the cookies were great. The cookies were great at Dr. NH Jones. The next morning, I also had the opportunity to go over to Hammett-Bourne, another one of my schools for donuts and dads. Again, shout out to Ms. Tracy Crawford, the principal over there, her staff. It was extremely pleasing to see over 70 dads show up for their kids on Friday morning and for the donuts and for the Christmas play. It was extremely, extremely fulfilling to see that, and they're doing some great things out there at Hammett-Bourne. Left Hammett-Bourne, went over to Saddlewood, just on a drive-by, and I stopped over to see Principal Liperia and Dr. Smytheys and Mr. Cook. They gave me a great tour of Saddlewood. Saddlewood is a unique school that's kinda hidden, that's hidden from the sight of everybody, but they have some great things going over there. Got a chance to see the chicken coop and the rabbits.
Oh, you did?
I did.
Did they try to make you take one home?
No.
Oh.
No, but what really caught me was in walking through, we walked through the music class, and in the music class, these kids were using some unique technologies, the teacher was using some unique methods to get them to learn the Nutcracker. And I just thought that was just wonderful to see these kids going out of their norm. And he asked a question, "Have you guys ever heard this song?" And this young little girl, one little girl, she said, "Yeah, I heard of it." She says, "It's the Nutcracker." And it was a little young African-American girl, and it made me feel proud because she said, "I've been to the play." So, I was pleased to hear this, and I had a great time, great, great time, just visiting these schools. Then shout out to Environmental Express for the float that they provided for us to participate in the Christmas Parade, it was a great time. Wish it would've been a little bit cooler, but it was a great time. We had a great time on the float and just representing the Marion County School Board. We are looking forward to all the great things that this season has to offer. I loved the Rabbi coming in and giving us some dialogue on Hanukkah and talking about Yeshua, which is Jesus, and I was just pleased to see that. And we have a unique, unique opportunity here in Marion County to set a standard, a standard for the state, and I'm looking forward to what we're gonna do. And again, I want to tell each and every one of you that you have a Merry Christmas, a safe New Year, and that you enjoy the season with your family, and it's not about the gifts that's under the tree, but it was the gift that went on the tree. So, again, Merry Christmas to you all.
Thank you. I also wanna tell the Paglius, thank you for supporting or providing that float, and not only did they provide floats, the float, but they provided little footballs to throw.
And a jacket.
And, oh yeah, Mr. Cummings had a pretty cool jacket with reindeer on it and cool glasses, and so, they just made it a fun experience for everyone, and we're so appreciative. Also, last week, I attended, or I was invited to participate at the Evergreen Winter Concert, and Mr. Cummings, you would've liked what you saw that evening. They were just precious. These children sang, they talked about the meaning of the Christmas tree, and even the staff was involved, they had their eaglets that sang a beautiful song, and it was just a very Christmasy moment, and I enjoyed every moment of it. Also, today, Beth and I were at Bellevue CTE Showcase Tour, and it was wonderful, and they're doing a great job, as Mr. Vianello stated, with their rigor, their relevance, and their relationships. And it was very evident what we saw today, and then it ended on a delightful luncheon with it. But also, what I noticed there, and also with Chef 9, he was talking about some things that may be difficult in his life, but he used levity. He had us laugh, and there was lessons to even be taught in that, and so, I just thought that was a really great day. Also, I need to bring up that Mr. Gibbs has received a referral from the Attorney General's Office without giving a lot of details. I mean, he's offered that he can check into it and see what we can find out, are we okay with that, or, Mr. Gibbs, do you wanna add anything?
It was a complaint made by a parent, and the Attorney General said it's not in their jurisdiction, it's our jurisdiction, but I have to get my authority to do any kind of investigation from the board, so I simply raised it with the chair so that the board can authorize whether you want me to look into it or not.
So, are we okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm happy to discuss it with you guys, if you wanna call me or come by my office anytime.
Okay. All right. And then, also, I wanted to bring this up at last week's work session, but we ran out of here in a hurry because we had a delegation meeting. After listening to my constituents, I've heard a lot of comments on our book adoption, our process that we are doing and the way we do it. We know, or I don't know if you guys know, I know, and I'm assuming that maybe you guys have heard the same things, like with our CKLA, our elementary books and stuff, that it has not been an easy transition or process. There are times where they're not even, they can't even use RV Source, sis. And it's even reflecting on how the process went last year, it was difficult, and we're talking hundreds, we're talking thousands and thousands of dollars, and we're talking about books that we cannot adopt for another, I believe it's five or six years. I would like to see us as a board, for the time being, just to consider maybe going back to how the rest of the state is doing, and that is, you know, looking at the adoption process that way, rather than us trying to trail race, because right now, our elementary schools are declining, and we are in no place to be trailblazing our way with our own curriculum at this point. Those are my thoughts. I would like to get your opinion on this before we move forward, because, like I said, it's a lot of money, and these books are gonna be with us for many years, and I don't know if we need to workshop this or what we need to do, but I'm curious to know your thoughts, or if you've had any feedback from your constituents. Nancy?
I would like to say, I agree with you 100%. And it's interesting because...
And it's interesting because I guess I saw last year, there was just, it... There was times where there's a certain window where they're doing the textbook evaluation, the people that, you know, that we put on the committee or whoever. And the board doesn't even, they don't even have access to the website where the books are at. It's shut down, it's closed to everybody except for those on the textbook committee. So we can't even, you know, see it. I was told last year, I said, "Well, I'd like to, you know, be able to see." Kind of, they said, "Well, no, there's a window that you get to be in when the public gets to see it" and, you know, and everything. Well, I was a school board member. I wanted to be watching this. And the rules and everything, I don't know. I guess they're in statute. I don't know if we're making the rules or if they're in statute. We're probably following some kind of rules. But I just feel that I'm nervous. I'm very nervous. The core curriculum that we adopted, in fact, it's interesting that you're bringing this up because I sent a note to Ms. Siznar just a couple of days ago. I said, "I'm just really not excited about this process." It's amazing that you're coming up with, you're coming up with the same thing because it's something we've never even, I mean, I didn't even know anybody else was thinking it. I knew the teachers weren't happy with it. And we've had complaints on the curriculum because the core curriculum that we adopted is not the one that I was hoping we would adopt. There's two, there's two core curriculums. You know, core, what's it called? Core, is it?
The CKLA.
Yeah.
And that is Common Core and they're not aligned to Florida's standards.
And so the core knowledge, I'm sorry, the core knowledge is what I'm trying to say. The core knowledge that we adopted is not the one that I had hoped that we would adopt because there isn't a version of it that came straight from the original people. This is a kind of a, another company took some on and took it to a different level and took it to an interesting level of some of their content that I don't approve of. And the district has talked to me about it and they don't approve of it either. I mean, they've actually told our teachers to not do it. And so I don't know how that got past us. And maybe if the school board members or some of us could have read this, but we were closed out to the computers, only the people on the reading team could even get into it. And I've, well, that's what I was told. I was told I couldn't get into it.
It was on the website. Anybody could have looked at it.
Not during the time that it was closed, before it was open to the public. It was just to the people that were on the reading committee, I was told. But then it opened to the public later.
Right.
But not...
And that's when you could have looked at it.
Right, but I wanted to look at it when we were going along with it. And so I agree with you, Ms. King. I do not support this. And because I don't support, I've had to really force myself. I've gotten a couple of people that I've asked to be on the committee and I feel like I'm not even doing them right by asking them to do this. And so I'm deeply concerned about our curriculum. And thank you so much for bravely bringing that forward because I was not going to say anything about it.
Does anybody else, do you want to? Nancy, have you heard anything about the process or what are your thoughts?
I haven't heard a lot and this is all new, you know, to me. I applauded the fact that we were asking for community input on our textbook reviews and who in the end makes the final determination?
We can still have community input.
Right, we can still, do you understand the process of, do we need to have a workshop maybe so you have a better understanding? I think so. So what we're going to, I think what we need to do, because we do have a new board, and I think, like I said, we really need to make some informed decisions because this affects us for many, many years. So I'm going to encourage you, in the meantime, to please go out, talk to your constituents, talk to the teachers and the schools that are teaching this curriculum that was passed last year. And then we can make a better informed decision, so.
We don't have to have our workshops just on a Thursday. I mean, we can have a workshop another day. We really will not, we won't melt if we have more than one meeting a week. It is okay.
So we'll look at some dates or we'll come up with something, but this needs to be addressed, I believe. Okay, well, thank you for entertaining that. Okay, I'm going to move forward. Before addressing expulsion matters, I wish to acknowledge that board members have received the alternative placement list for students through November 14, 2018. Mrs. Martinez-Lopez, are there any parents who have submitted a timely request to speak on their child's disciplinary matter?
We're going to be doing that off-air.
Off, okay. So we'll do that then. May I have a motion to approve the expulsion of student JD-19-060, JD-19-061, JD-19-063, JD-19-66, JD-19-067, and JD-19-070E with educational services through the remainder of the 2018-2019 school year and the first semester of the 2019-2020 school year? Moved by Ms. McCall. I need a second. Second by Mr. Cummings. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by voting aye. And there's an opposed like sign. And the motion passed 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the expulsion of student JD-19-064 and JD-19-065 without educational services through the remainder of the 2018-2019 school year and the first semester of the 2019-2020 school year? I need a motion. Moved by Ms. McCall. Second by Nancy Stacy. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by voting aye. And there's an opposed like sign. And the motion passed 5-0. This concludes the televised and business portion of the meeting. I declare a brief recess to clear the room prior to further discussing student discipline matters regarding early reentry requests. And we are recessed at 7:06.